Good evening. The time is now six o'clock and I would like to call the regular work session for the Rockdale County Public Schools to order. First item on our agenda is oath of office. So, we have two board members that will be sworn in tonight, Ms. Sandra Jackson Lett and Ms. Janie Jones. So ladies, which will you want first?
Ms. Sandra Jackson Lett first, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson Lett, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Hang on just a second. Can he hold the battle for her?
Slow and not smiling up us tonight, but it's okay.
If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Sandra Jackson Lett.
I Sandra Jackson Lett.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
And being an employee of Rockdale County.
And being an employer of Rockdale County.
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered as such employee.
For service rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly.
Do hereby solemnly.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of Georgia.
Of Georgia.
Okay, you may lower your hand. Having taken the loyalty oath, we will now do the official oath of the Member of County Board of Education. You can raise your hand again. I Sandra Jackson Lett.
I Sandra Jackson Lett.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
And being an employee.
And being an employee.
Of Rockdale County Board of Education.
Of Rockdale County Board of Education.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipients of public funds.
For services rendered as such employee.
For service rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will truly and faithfully.
That I will truly and faithfully.
Discharge all the duties required of me by law.
Discharge all the duties required of me by law.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of Rockdale County.
Of Rockdale County.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Nor either.
Nor either.
Of the several states.
Of several states.
Nor of any foreign state.
Nor of any foreign states.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
And I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I have met the residency requirement.
And I have met the residence requirements.
Of this office.
Of this office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Having taken both oath, you will now sign the oath that you have just taken. Now we will administer the oath for Ms. Janie Jones, Janie Jones. If you would, Ms. Jones, raise your right hand and repeat after me. First, we will administer the loyalty oath and then we will administer the oath for, as a member of the County Board of Education. First, the loyalty oath. I Janie Jones.
I Janie Jones.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
And being an employee.
And being an employee.
Of Rockdale County Board of Education.
Of Rockdale County Board of Education.
And the recipient.
And the recipient.
Of public funds for services.
Of public funds for services.
Rendered as such employee.
Rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Next, we will administer the oath for members of the County Board of Education. If you will raise your hand again, please. I Janie Jones.
I Janie Jones.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
A citizen of Rockdale County.
And being an employee.
And being an employee.
Of Rockdale County Board of Education.
Of Rockdale County Board of Education.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For services rendered.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of Georgia.
Of Georgia.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will truly and faithfully.
That I will truly and faithfully.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Required of me by law.
Required of me by law.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of a, as a member of the Board of Education.
Of Rockdale County.
Of Rockdale County.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do furthers.
I do further.
Swear.
Swear.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted.
Of any unaccounted.
Public money do this state.
Public money do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government.
Under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Nor of either.
Nor of either.
Of the several states.
Of the several states.
Nor of any foreign state.
Nor of any foreign states.
And that I am otherwise.
And that I am otherwise.
Qualified to hold said office.
Qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the Constitutions.
And that I will support the Constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I have met.
And that I have met.
The residency requirements.
Residency requirement.
Of this office.
Of this office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, we will, you can lower your hand and we'll have you sign the oath that you've just verbally given. As a member of the County Board of Education, if you will just sign there, please. Okay, next we'll have you sign the loyalty oath which you've verbally given.
I know.
If you hadn't verbally given the oath and signed it, congratulations.
Thank you. Next, we're going to take a quick recess for some pictures and us to congratulate.
It was quite nice. It was nice because we didn't host people and we didn't have to travel anywhere.
Oh, no. That's real nice.
I did cook some coffee, right. But my, my, our eldest son is back living with us. His old friend came over for dinner. She kind of stays around a lot.
Wouldn't you rather her stay at your house than in the house?
Yes, but I did tell him, cleaning up, because her mother's a traveling nurse and she's in Philadelphia.
Well, aren't you? Like I said.
But, yes, but what I've had that conversation with her. I don't want to be a grandparent right now. Looking forward to it down the road.
Our meeting is called back to order. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second Akita.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. Next is election of officers, in which I'm going to step out of the way and let Dr. Oates handle the election of our new board chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. And as a point of personal privilege, I'd like to say that I've enjoyed serving with you, Madam Chairwoman, and with you, Madam Vice Chairwoman, in your respective capacities. But now, the time has arrived for the election of a new board chair. And at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for chair.
Akita Palmer, I would like to nominate Pamela Brown to the position of board chair.
I'll second that nomination.
Having a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions or any nomination? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, all right. That, I believe that was six one. Congratulations, Madam Chairwoman.
But we're going to take this time to rearrange a little bit. Give us a second.
Okay, yes, she can switch. I was going to say, if anybody else wants to do the vice chair.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And I'd like to say thank you to my board, especially to Akita Palmer for her nomination. Thank you so much, Akita. And to Duncan, Heather Duncan, for your second motion. To our newest board member, Janie Jones, thank you very much for your vote of confidence. I appreciate that. Mandy North, I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for being a great board chair. And all the things that you have taught me during this time, I appreciate it. Sandra Jackson Lett, thank you so much for your vote. To all of the citizens of Rockdale County, thank you. The floor is open for nominations for vice chair. Do I have a motion for our vice chair?
Sandra Jackson Lett nominate Heather Duncan as the vice chair.
A second.
Okay, a motion has been made from Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there, well, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any other nominations? Any discussions? All in favor? All right, motion carries seven unanimously. Now is the time to recognize our visitors for comments. Oh, okay, we're going to change. Okay, excuse me. We're going to take a moment to change seats. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Now it is time for recognition of our visitors for comments. We have a few visitors that have completed the cards. Let's see, Corliss Turner. Ms. Corliss Turner, please come to the podium. Okay, well, I do have a message that I need to say before you get started.
Okay.
At this time, we come to our next item of business, recognizing visitors for comments. This is the time when we allow you three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, or rude or slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous. Thank you so much, Ms. Turner.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say good evening to everyone and Happy New Year, Merry Christmas and all of that. But what I want to address tonight is the graduation. I know I have been speaking to Dr. Oates and Sidney Ball through email. I'm, I think I speak for a majority of the. I'm, I think I speak for a majority of the Voices for Rockdale, which is a citizens group, along with some parents that have personally contacted me. I heard that the graduations, I don't have any children that graduated in Rockdale County, but I understand that they're usually held at the school. Also, there's an issue with it being taken outside of the county. In response to that, Dr. Oats said that Springfield Baptist Church didn't have the capacity. And I am a ex-member of Springfield, and I know that they do hold 3100. And you're having three graduations, and I wouldn't see that that would be an issue. But the issue with the church, a couple of parents contacted me concerning it being at a church, and due to their faith, they do not enter a church. We had a meeting in November for Voices for Rockdale, and one of the members who created our flyer, she did not attend because it was in a church. Also, I would think that it would save the parents, the graduation fee would probably reduce it by having it at the school. The other issue is having it on a Wednesday, and it was responded back from Dr. Oats that the students and the parents had been informed in January that the graduation was going to be on a Wednesday. I am a grandmother. If I had to come to Rockdale County for my grandchild's graduation, I would need to come on Tuesday, traveling time. Graduation is Wednesday. At the graduation, there's normally graduation parties, and then on Thursday, return home. That's a lot of time to ask for someone to come. Also, when I mentioned the school, Dr. Oats said that it is streamed. If a person's faith don't allow them to enter a church, why would they stream if their child is not going to be walking across the stage? So I don't think that was taken into consideration, as well as the most important thing is with these times, and you know, we just got a property tax increase, and with the economy, I think it would save the parents. I don't know how, how it is, the fees, I think he said that it, that you get it from the graduation fees with the students. And I think it would save the parents a lot of finances if you were to have it in the school. Thank you for your time, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Our next visitor is Katrina Young.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? So first of all, I went to the wrong location because this is my first board meeting in the new location. So I made it here, made it on time. But I just wanted to say congratulations. This is an historic moment, I think, to have an all-black leadership for this county in the school district. Fifty-five years ago, I was in these halls helping to integrate the school district here at Pine Street Elementary. And just to see it to come full circle, and then you all ladies at the helm, y'all are beautiful up here. The whole lot of you are beautiful. And I'm just so proud of the decisions, your tenacity, your commitment for this community, for this school system, for our children. And I know you all are making the best and right decision with the information that you provided for all kids involved. Because we all know it's all about the kids. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to Pam Brown and to Heather Duncan. They're like my babies. I'm sorry. I'm just so proud. And to everyone else that has served on the board, Mandy, Sandra Wells, and now Akita and Janie. So congratulations, Dr. Oats. Keep up the good work. Hey, the squad over here, y'all too, okay? So thank y'all, and I'm just so proud and just happy to be here to share in this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Okay, our next visitor is Kirkland Lofton.
Good evening, Superintendent. Good evening, Board. My comment, well, I tend to agree with the decision about the graduation. I have a problem with that as well as taking it outside the county. It seems like it's taking our dollars outside of the county. So I feel that they can find somewhere in the county to do it. But my main reason for coming here is that I would like to know that anything that you all can do with coming together with the Board of, the Board of Commissioners, or the zoning department, so that we don't have these meetings on the same day. Because I think that we, as a community, have a right to be able to attend both meetings and to be, have consideration of both meetings. And it seems like these meetings always fall at the same time, on the same day. And it deprives us from being able to go and hear what's going on in, throughout the county in totality. So I'm interested in the school board meetings. I'm interested in the zoning meetings. I'm interested in VOC meetings. And I don't think that I should have to sit back and pick and choose between one or the other on any given day. And also, is it possible that she could make these things come on a live stream or something like the zoning meetings do? So that people who don't get to come out to the meetings can see them still, and have the option to go back and look at the recordings as well. So that's all I have to say. I will be attending these meetings because I'm really interested in what's going on with the school board and what's going on here. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. Our next visitor is Aviella Williams.
I think they said most of this. I object to taking the graduation out of the county. However, I came before and I spoke with you guys about the development in Rockdale County, about the growth. And there seemed to be little concern about the growth. And I understand from an educational perspective that you all are going to educate regardless of the number of students. However, there seems to be some concern with, with the community opinion, because like graduation, apparently, we don't have enough facilities to accommodate our families right here in Rockdale County. That would suggest that we're a little overcrowded if we have to take graduation out of the county in order to come accommodate our families and our students. Also, the mention of putting some students in trailers, if need be, is to, that's a solution for overcrowding. And all of the students are not going to feel the same way, where some students are in the building and some students in the trailer. And my daughter, who graduated from Rockdale, told me to tell you guys, why didn't you put your office in a trailer if that's the solution? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, our next visitor is Jesus Oliveris.
Thank you. First of all, Happy New Year, by the way, okay? I have kind of three questions, but I don't know if they're appropriate right now. So let me just say what they are, and you just let me know. And I'll just deviate, whatever has to be done. The first thing is the cleanup of the county. Okay? The second, I don't know if you got there, but it has to do with the building of those homes in Honey Creek.
Okay, so let me just share with you, this is the Board of Education.
Okay.
We are only dealing with issues or concerns or comments about the education of our students.
The next one is this, I think I brought this up once before. I might not look at it, but I'm 75 years of old. I don't have any children here. I've been here over 20 years. Yet my taxes, 60% of the taxes goes to the school board. Other counties around us have changed some of those laws. So I'm just bringing that up for consideration. The majority of people right now here in, in the county are elderly people. And most of them are like me, but most of them are on a fixed income. So that's why I asked for the three questions. That's the third, only for the board. That's my consideration for the board to look at.
Thank you so much, Mr. Oliveris. Okay, our next visitor is Phyllis Samuel.
Congratulations to the new board members. My concerns have to do with the graduation and the location outside of the county. Like this gentleman here, I, we too are senior citizens. We fought against the millage rate increase, which, to no avail, it was increased anyway. And we have no children here. So I, it was kind of a shock to find out that graduation was going to be held in DeKalb County. And I'm like, well, where are our taxes going to that we cannot support our schools here in Rockdale? And on top of that, why is the money going out of Rockdale County that would go for flowers and parties afterwards and everything? Because that's what happened. And you say your concern is the students, you got to remember, we're coming out of a pandemic. There were families whose kids did not get to graduate. Graduation is a big deal now. You know, families come together. This is something that's huge, that may not have been so huge before. But because they were locked down and didn't have graduations, it's really celebrated. That's a lot of money that could be in our county, bringing my millage rate down. I ask you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Samuel. Okay, last but not least, Janice Mars.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. It is a pleasure, an honor, to see what I have experienced today. I wouldn't have missed it for the world, even if the storm were to came. I am so proud of each and every one of you all. Janie, welcome aboard. Job well done. Kita Palmer, chair, you always was the chair, so let's get that understood. You are amazing, but you learn from the best. Thank you. Duncan, thank you so much, Heather. Thank you for being strong. Sandra, we did it again. You are well deserved. You earned it. Education is so important because it leads us to being where we are today. Any one of us, I hope my grandchildren, someone would take this seat one day. My husband stood before you in this seat years and years ago. And as I see each and every one of you, Superintendent, all of y'all being so strong for what we going through, I'm on a positive note. Stay strong, no matter what. Our children need you. Put everything aside, and let's get the job done. But last but not least, we have a former school board member. She's my hero as well. I'm standing here because of her. That is Katrina Young. All of y'all, my old family, continue to be my family. I love you all, and I'm here for you. I'm not the clerk today. I'm a stakeholder, I'm an investor, and I'm a grandma of Salem High School. And I ask of you to support me, and I'm going to support you to get her to the promised land. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's cabinet updates. I will turn it over to Dr. Oats.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Up first is Ms. Laura Grimway, as she takes the podium. She's our federal programs director, and she's going to give us an update on just kind of oriented to our federal programs, and then give us a preview of our upcoming federal monitoring. Ms. Grimway.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Brown, Superintendent Oats, and all you board members. Thank you for having me. So, there we go. Look. Okay. Grover, why does this always happen to me? Let me tell you about Title I, and actually, federal programs. What we have done so far, while we're trying to get this up here. There we go. Okay, so what we have done so far is we have taken the federal programs, comprehensive needs assessment, and the district improvement plan, and we have tried to match it to the strategic plan as closely as possible. And the reason for that is because in the past, we've always had to have a plan for this, a plan for that, a plan for that. And we just decided that's just too much planning. That's just too much planning for all our schools and for the district to have to do. So with the hard work of all the directors from all the departments, outside stakeholders, parents and families, and our, our chiefs that we report to, and our superintendent, we have brought these two together to make this as a one-unit thing. We have married the strategic plan with the district improvement plan, so that we are looking at one whole picture instead of all these pieces put in separate entities. So what I want to show you today is the hard work that we have done in the, well, since the beginning of this, this school year, to marry those two pieces together. So we've taken the strategic plan, and we've matched it up, matched up the district improvement plan to be one of the same. So for example, our overarching need in the, in the Rockdale County Comprehensive Needs Assessment, which, by the way, is required by the Department of Education and the Federal Department of Education, because any school or district receiving federal funds has to have this plan in place. So to make them match up, we took the two together. So you can see that A, B, and C of the CLIP, SIP, which is the strategic plan, I mean, the comprehensive plan, and A, B, and C of the strategic plan are the same. And then when you go to the second overarching need and the strategic plan goal, they two are the same, which is to increase student learning or improve student learning. And then the third one, we've had to, these are different only because our overarching need three and the strategic plan number four match up. And the reason that they're opposite numbers like that is because if we were to change them and to match them up, we would lose all the action steps that are already in place. So we're just going to leave them separate, but they are the same, focusing on the positive culture and climate. So again, we're going to utilize federal funds to work with our strategic plan, so that we are going to be improving student achievement in every way possible. And then overarching need four for the comprehensive needs assessment, and the strategic plan goal three are the same. And that is for the community, family, and all stakeholders. And then when you look at the overarching need number five and the strategic plan number five, they again are the same. So everything's the same other than those two separate numbers, you know, trying to match those up. So with all that hard work in place, all the, all the action steps of the strategic plan, those that can be supplemented with federal funding of some sort are put into the comprehensive plan, so that we are providing supplemental funding to meet our strategic goals. And then, because every four years, we're required to be audited or monitored by the state, we are being monitored on February 7th, so that is coming up, and we're working hard to make sure everything is in place. We're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and making sure we have everything ready for when the state comes in and audits us. All right, so I want to talk about the separate programs that fall underneath me, which is one Title I, Title I Part A. And that, those funds are to improve the academic achievement of our disadvantaged students. And because, you know, we had something that started with a C that kind of like shut everybody down for a couple of years, I'm not even going to say that word. But we've got a lot of students who are lacking. So I would say that most of our students have a disadvantage right now in terms of academic achievement. We also support the family and the community partnerships, excuse me, the family and community school partnerships, foster care students, the education of the migratory children, the neglected and delinquent children in youth, and the education of the homeless children in youth. And to show you how we do that, well, first of all, our first semester highlights focus on the fact that we've divvied the funds all out to the school, you know, to their school, to our schools, based on their needs assessment and their school improvement plans, which again, supports the strategic plan of the district. And then the district allocation is based on the needs assessment again, which is the strategic plan. And then we are using our funds to supplement the strategic plan. And to show you how we've been doing that, for example, strategic plan goal number one, the initiative or the action step was to retain and develop classified employees. And we are doing that by providing a salary for our homeless foster liaison, paraprofessional salaries, parent and family engagement liaison salaries and benefits, and we provide professional development for all. parent and family engagement liaison salaries and benefits, and we provide professional development for all. For plan goal number two, strategic plan goal number two, the initiative being to modify the RCPS collaborative coaching plan to increase teacher effectiveness, we're providing salary and benefits for coaches and professional development. So that's how this, our Title I funding is supporting this initiative. And then for also for strategic plan goal number two, the initiative of improving instructional practices and strategies in all courses and content, what we're doing is we're providing funding for letters, training, and supplies, professional development for teachers and leaders, and stipends or subs, stipends during non-contract hours and subs during contract hours for teacher release time so they can analyze data and provide strategies for our at-risk students. For strategic plan goal number three, which deals with community and family engagement, we're reviewing and revising, well, we already have reviewed and revised, all necessary school and district websites. We've included the parents' right to know, the GOSA, the Georgia, I mean, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement report cards, and the federal programs websites. And that would be district and school both. And then also for community and family engagement, to improve parent and guardian awareness and use of community tools and increase parent and guardian communication, we are providing the salary for the Director of Family and Community Support. And we also provide salaries for parent and family engagement liaisons and trainings that take place throughout the year. And also for family and community support, we have the inclusion of the community stakeholders in the development of our district needs assessment and district improvement plans. So our next steps, as I said, that, you know, Title I funds are to improve the academic achievement of all students, we're going to continue to fund and support each school through their comprehensive needs assessment and their school improvement plans, as well as the district plan, which allows, which is as allowable through the district comprehensive needs assessment and federal compliance. So there are things in our strategic plan that federal funds cannot be used for, and that's what I'm talking about with the federal compliance. All right. And so we also have L4GA underneath our umbrella. And this is what has been happening for the first semester with L4GA. So the strategic plan goal number one and the initiative to retain and develop certified employees, we are supporting the reading endorsement with participant books and guided reading pathways books. For our strategic plan goal number two, implementing evidence-based practices to promote students and become assessment-capable learners, we're providing funding for Think Circa, which is being used across the district. And for also for the same goal, to develop and implement comprehensive birth through 12th grade literacy plan, we're taking care of that with high dosage tutoring through Kumon. And the strategic plan, human resources and talent management. Moving forward, we are going to be purchasing the Leadership Summit books for the summer 2023, and that's to retain and develop certified employees. And for the community and family engagement piece, to improve community involvement, they're providing free books at the literacy pop-up that will take place on January 21st of this month at the, at the Horse Park, and that's the Frosty 5K. And they're also going to be providing math by the book to develop and implement birth through 12th grade literacy plans. And there's also another section that not many people hear about, and that's the Title IV Part A, which is also known as the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Program Grant. And there's three areas of this grant. One is well-rounded education, which the funds need to be used to support activities that relate to the core academics, foreign language, health and PE, fine arts, and career and technical education. Then the second part of this, well, a minimum of 20% of those funds have to go for well-rounded education. And a minimum of 20% of the funds also have to go for safe and healthy students, which supports activities such as supportive learning environments. Popular strategies include PBIS, family and community engagement, and mental and physical health initiatives. And then we also, not, not more than 10% can go towards effective use of technology, which would include staff development, STEM subjects, technology, and different ways that we can differentiate instruction for, to help students learn. So I'll show you how we're using those funds. So for the strategic plan goal one, and this falls under well-rounded education, which is to support the foreign language, fine arts, and the health and PE band, all those areas that normally don't get funding, we are providing subs for release time so that teachers can collaborate and revise standards to strengthen instruction in the fine arts and core subjects. We're providing professional training for teachers in fine arts and core subjects. We provide AP summer institutes for AP teachers. In other words, we're paying for the registration and their, and, well, they haven't been traveling with this recently because of the C word, but they've been doing online and we've been giving them stipends. And then registration fees for fine arts core academic teachers to attend trainings and conferences. For goal number two, to increase the equity and access opportunity for all students, we're providing AP funds, AP exam funds for low-income students. And we also pay for the salary and benefits for the dual enrollment coach. And then for goal number three, oh, I'm sorry, this is the safe and healthy students portion, and this has to deal with like mental health and physical activities, parent and family engagement, PBIS and stuff like that. What we're doing here is, this falls under strategic plan goal three, and we're providing the salary and benefits for the parent and family engagement liaison. And for, that's for the families of the non-traditional students. All the schools have a parent and family engagement liaison that is supported through Title I funds, but our non-traditional schools cannot use Title I funds. So we focus our Title IV funds to provide the same for our non-traditional families. And then we also pay for Remind 101 to promote two-way parent and school communication. And then for strategic plan number four, we pay for subs for release time for the health and PE teachers to work collaboratively on curriculum and lesson plan, and lesson plans that will include the PBIS, which is the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We provide professional training for the health and PE teachers, HPE. And we provide instructors for youth and mental health first aid training, which is provided in the summer. Some of you may have attended that training as well. And for the, for the staff members who attend that during the summer when they are not under contract, we also provide stipends. And then we provided the travel and registration and the kits for crucial conversations training, the training courses. And then the last bucket under Title IV is for effective use of technology. And we support our technology through meeting the programmatic needs. And that would be the Learning Reimagined that our technology department provides for our staff and leaders in the summertime. So we provide the stipends for that as well. So you can see we're putting this all to good use and it's all supporting our strategic goals and our strategic plan. So with that, does anybody have any questions for me?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we are adjusting to a new normal. You know, we understand the importance, and as we adjust to that new normal, we understand the importance of family engagement in the success of students emotionally, socially, academic-wise. As we try to get parents back into the building, are there funding opportunities? Are there money in your Title I funds to allow PTAs and PTOs and different parent organizations that want to get back in the buildings, but they're having trouble with finding that money to start back up? Are you guys able to assist as you assist with the other organizations?
That's a great question. PTOs, PTAs, and PTOs cannot be title-funded, but a lot of times they do them both together because title funds can pay for parents to come into the school for like trainings and different things like that. So the schools provide their own parent and family engagement opportunities at their own schools. And so a lot of times they will run those together with the PTO meetings and stuff like that, but actual PTO, PTO and PTA meetings are not federally funded.
What does it cover, though, in terms of just food, what training?
No, 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 so we can pay for, they can pay for an instructor to come in and train teachers. I'll use an example, for a math night, maybe, they might host a math night at their school. So they'll pay, the title funds would pay for the flyers to send home to the, notify the parents for any materials and supplies that would need to be purchased to host the math night or a reading night. They pay for, well, they do provide light snacks like water, coffee, maybe some nuts. Well, I guess we can't really give nuts anymore because people are allergic to those, but cookies or muffins, you know, whatever the school purchases. And then they will also pay, like, teachers are not under their contract at that time to come in the evenings and do these, so they can pay stipends to the teachers. If they have a presenter, they can pay for the presenter. In our areas where we have a big Hispanic community, we can pay for somebody to come in and interpret. So that's what title, title funds would be used towards.
Okay, so in an ideal scenario, the PTA or PTO decides that they want to have a welcome back with the parents and they want to support curriculum night, but they want to be the ones to do the flyer and do the advertisement. They go to the parent liaison and say, we would like to partner with you. And, you know, can you support us with the flyers and the food for the parents and stuff like that? And they would be amenable to that.
So it couldn't say PTO or PTA meeting, it would have to say Title I meeting. And then nobody would know the difference. So they would be able to partner those together, but it would definitely have to be, we have to take the advertisements that they send home. We have to keep those and provide them to the Department of Education showing that we are following the initiatives that we're required to follow. So as long as it's Title I, then we can do whatever is needed.
Well, I appreciate that because I think that'd be something that the parents do want to know, that they do have resource and partnership that can help them come back into the buildings and do what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
To the teachers, what do we do to the, do for the children? Like, for instance, if they're going off and abroad, do we have funding to assist them?
So we provide professional development to teachers so that they can, you know, be better teachers to provide, you know, to improve student achievement. For students, most of the schools have tutorials before school, after school, and they pay teachers to provide tutorial services to students who are struggling to meet their great appropriate standards. So that's mostly what title funds are used for in terms of students.
So I, I know that you said that the PTA can work together with the school. One thing that we do at the school where my child attends is that they may have a Title I meeting, but they may also have a PTA meeting at the same time or during the same time. And they will be there at the event, the Title I event. And it's kind of like partnership, as the parents come in, you know, they're, you know, they will say, you know, if you want to visit our PTA meeting, they're in room such as such, such as such. And then they'll go and they'll get information from PTA. So basically, that's what you're saying when you say partner, not necessarily advertise, but when they get there, you can share with them that PTA is available today. If you, if you want to participate, join, or if you want to attend the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Carolina Robinson Edwards. Phenomenal. And she, I think, also, I mean, I, I don't know this for a fact, but at one time she was also the PTO person there. And I think she does both of them. She shows an excellent way of doing it because she is promoting Title I, but she's also bringing in PTO as well. So she does a phenomenal job of providing services for families. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else? I don't know if I'm supposed to call out names like that, but she is phenomenal. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Madam Chairwoman, next, we have our Chief Strategy Innovation Officer Cindy Ball coming to give us our first update on our progress on our new five-year strategic plan that went into effect year one this year.
That is correct. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Brown and Vice Chair Duncan, board members and guests. This is our first strategic plan update of our new plan, which did begin July 1st. It is a five-year plan, so this is probably going to be the shortest update we'll ever have because we've only been into this one semester. So we're just getting started on this plan. And what we tried to do is make sure that all of our schools and all of our teachers have updated materials and remove all the, the old materials, posters, and framed artwork and everything that were scattered around the schools and departments. So we gave everybody a framed mission, vision, and beliefs for all of our schools and our departments. And then we provided every classroom with a new continuous improvement poster. And so this is really so that this plan is a living, breathing document for everybody in the district, not just those of us in central office that are standing up here reporting out, right? Everybody has a piece of this. And so when you visit our schools, hopefully you will see these in the classrooms. And again, it stays top of mind that really what the work and the focus is over the next five years with regard to our strategic plan. I've showed this to you before, we have phased out our strategic plan. It is a five-year plan. And really, what this is, is administratively Cabinet goes through and looks at all of the action plans and puts them into phases. And so right now, we have phase one and phase two. You can see that the years there, phase one is this school year and next school year. And then 24, 25, and 25, 26 will be phase two. Phase three, we don't currently have any in phase three right now, but some will get pushed to phase three. And I will tell you that it's really, really nice that Laura was able to share with us some of the funding sources for some of these initiatives because sometimes that's what changes what phase something goes into, right? And it's all about resources, are the resources available to carry out the action plan? So you'll see a lot of what she shared is going to show up in the next few slides. So we'll start, our first goal area is human resources and talent development. Shut this book. And, and as Laura mentioned, providing incentives to enhance district recruiting. And over the summer, we had a $2,500 hiring incentive for certified personnel and $500 hiring incentive for bus drivers, parapros, and school food service personnel. And I will remind you that our Cabinet members do monthly updates to the board. So there's probably not too much in this update that you haven't already heard about. There may be one or two things, but for the most part, this is, these are all things that we report to you on a monthly basis, rotating basis. And this is just putting it into the strategic plan format so that you can see the work that's being done and how it relates to the strategic plan. Okay. Networking with local colleges to increase awareness of RCPS opportunities. You can see a lot of that is going on with Clayton State, Georgia, Georgia Southern University, Georgia State, Kennesaw State, Savannah State University. Recruiting beyond the local area to state, national, and international. And I know our HR department and our Andrea Nelson, who has reported to us on what she's doing with regard to recruitment and working with colleges outside. You can see Alabama, Maryland, South Carolina, Tennessee, and then also internationally. We talk about retaining and developing classified employees. We hear a lot about certified employees. And really with this strategic plan, it was important to continue to include a component that specifically addressed classified employees. We know that we've had a very difficult time with, you know, finding bus drivers and school food service workers and some other classified positions. So it's very important to put this in here and show that we do have a plan to So it's very important to put this in here and show that we do have a plan to retain and develop, not just retain, but develop our classified employees. And that goes to extending professional learning opportunities and opportunities for growth for classified employees. Again, more about showing how paraprofessionals participated in professional learning, our office staff employees in cultural proficiency training, our buildings and grounds employees also participated in cultural proficiency training. Again, all showing efforts to develop our classified employees and allow them that growth opportunity. Restructuring the professional learning department for optimal effectiveness and efficiency. You can see we hired a data, a professional learning data specialist, teacher induction specialist. And I will say that, you know, because we are just starting with this plan, not everything in Phase 1 has artifacts and evidence to it just yet as well. So if you're looking at the plan online and you're saying, well, she didn't report on that, it just hasn't gotten started yet. And that's okay because remember, Phase 1 is a two-year phase, right? So not everything is going to be started right now. Providing training for all leaders in the areas of inclusive leadership, cultural proficiency, employee recognition, and employee appreciation. Again, the IST meetings, that's Instructional Support Team, with cultural proficiency training. And then also, our professional learning department is working right now to create a training program called the Five Languages of Appreciation in the Workplace for our Moving on to student learning, achievement, and growth. And this is an area that I heard a lot, that Ms. Grimwade mentioned Title I supporting. And this is an area that, you know, is really the backbone of our organization, teaching and learning. And I know that teaching and learning has somebody every month come and report out to you. So this is one of the areas that you really are going to be familiar with, a lot of these artifacts and evidence. And this is always going to be our longest section because this is why we're here, right? We're here to educate children. So implementing a district-wide comprehensive instructive instructional effectiveness plan that addresses essential components of instructional planning, delivery, assessment, and response using the RCPS cycle for results. So all of this is about instruction, right? So you're going to see a lot of professional learning. I'm not going to read all this to you, but you're going to see a lot about professional learning, developing and implementing common unit assessments, Think Circa, that was another thing that was supported by Title I. The next thing is modifying the RCPS Collaborative Coaching Plan to increase teacher effectiveness, reviewing that plan with all of our schools and district leaders. And then all of these district and school-based coaches are enrolled in the coaching endorsement this school year. We're piloting a time management tool to measure that coaching, the coaching observations, goals, and feedback. Implementing a K-12 Comprehensive Advanced Academics Plan for gifted and high-achieving students. I'm really not going to go through this line by line because it wasn't too long ago that Beth Gillis was here and told you all about this slide. So I'm not going to, you all have it in front of you. If you have any questions, I'll allow you to direct those back to Beth. But looking at all of the artifacts and evidence under this, she just went through every single one of these, so I won't go through them. And again, you know, expanding on that, in Beth's area, in learning experience in all courses and content areas to aid and accelerate the learning process, things like exploring the pre-AP for middle and early high school graduates, project-based learning opportunities for elementary gifted pull-out classes. So there's a lot going on in the area of advanced academics. Preparing every student to be productive and thriving members of our global society. Implementing new curriculum for personal, finance, and economics. We know we had Dr. Richardson here not too long ago talking about that. Voter Registration Drive, that was held during the High School Voter Registration Week in September. Mock Election held K-12 in November. And the Profile of a Graduate Design that we've also heard from teaching and learning. Develop and implement a comprehensive birth-through 12th grade literacy plan. Again, this is one of those that we've heard about in depth from our Teaching and Learning Division, Reading Recovery, the CUMON, and again, that was mentioned, the funding of CUMON. So you can see how everything is tying together with not only the plan, but the resources that are complementing the plan. Again, a lot of this is professional learning, improving instructional practices and strategies in all courses and content areas. So improving instructional strategies takes that professional learning. So a lot of this you'll see professional learning. Again, improving instructional practice, this is just continued. So a very long list of evidence and artifacts right here in the first semester of this plan. We've seen things like letters. Again, this is something that Laura just mentioned, the funding for letters and some of the other professional learning that Title I is able to support. So we're able to do that because we do have these two plans so tightly aligned, which has not always been the case, I will tell you. In the past, we have had to look at some of these action plans and say, well, how are we going to do this? You know? So it's really, really important to hear that we're aligning everything so that the funding can be available for us to implement our plan. Improving instructional practices, again, this is other evidence. Moving on to community, family, and student engagement. Reviewing and revising as necessary all school and district websites. This is a huge project, it's time to do it. We did it about six years ago. And I will just tell you, it is more than a year-long project to do. We have 22 school sites, we have a district site. The conversion alone, once we choose a product, the conversion alone takes a very, very long time. But we're starting that process. And what we're going to start the process with is a communication survey for our parents and guardians. And in the meantime, though, we are working on what we're calling a refresh of our current websites with our current website vendor. So, you know, because we're embarking on this project doesn't mean the current websites are going to be static and forgotten about. We have to continue to improve what we have in the meantime as well. Improving parent and guardian awareness and use of communication tools and increasing parent and guardian communication. Some of the things started here is we've integrated the parent portal account creation with the student registration process and streamlined the parent language preference in Remind. That was pretty cumbersome when we started, and I have to credit Michael Rosen for working with Remind and really making that an easier streamlined process so that our parents that have a home language other than English can get their Remind messages more quickly once they sign up in Remind. So we're very excited about that. There's no delay. There used to be a little bit of a delay to actually get it in their home language. So we've streamlined that process. And then, you know, using all of our communication tools for reminding parents to do the annual update and provide current contact information. And then our communication survey for parents and guardians will also help us understand what parents' preference is in receiving communication, you know, what tools are working for them, what tools are not working for them, what issues they have around school-to-home or teacher-to-home communication, or is it district-to-home communication? So we're trying to break that down and get that feedback so that as we move forward with improving communication, we understand where our parents and guardians feel that we are with communication. We intend to launch that next week, actually. Again, improving communication with stakeholders without children in the district, and I know this came up earlier in the meeting, but this meeting is being live-streamed. All of our monthly board meetings are now live-streamed. And you can go back to our YouTube channel and see the recorded, the recording of this live meeting. Earlier this year, I did a Teams meeting with the Voices for Rockdale, some who are here in our audience this evening, to provide a system overview. And then we are also engaging in the Chambers Initiative of Front Porch Discussions. You each have a flyer, I think, that's going to be on January 26th. And we have a shared economic development employee that has been hired as well. Improving student voice, going back to, again, some of the things that Title I can support. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of the initiatives for improving student voice are embedded in the PBIS, which is the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Framework. So a lot of that is embedded in that framework. And it's making sure that we are implementing with fidelity the PBIS framework. So a lot of training involved in that and making sure that everybody is using that framework with fidelity. And then completed walkthroughs to observe the implementation of the PBIS during those focus walks. And then, of course, we recruited and identified our 2023 cohort of Rockdale youth leadership. Improving parental attendance and involvement in school activities and workshops. You know, this is an ongoing thing with engaging family engagement. And in, one of the things that COVID did teach us is that there are times that we can work virtually, right? And so this, under this particular action plan, it calls for providing those opportunities whenever feasible for parents to participate in a virtual setting as well as an in-person. And so you can see some of the advanced placement meetings and recruitments and dual enrollment meetings and informational meetings where it's not always convenient for a parent to leave work to get to or home if they're, you know, cooking or whatever, to be able to log on and get that information as well. And then expanding some of the opportunities, getting a little creative. I know Heritage High School did sports tailgates. And then curriculum nights and using, again, using all of our tools, communication tools to ensure that parents are aware of the school curriculum nights. Improving community involvement, again, the live streaming of this monthly, this work session and our regular session, so it's two board meetings a month that are live-streamed, allows more of our community to come to our board meeting, right, virtually, and hear what's going on in the school system. Our front porch discussions that I mentioned, expanding the outreach through the Chamber Education Committee to support projects and rcpspartner.com. We've had several new supporters come in, you know, step up to the plate and fund some of the things that are on rcpspartner.com. You may have seen recently even Piedmont Rockdale Emergency Department just donated $1,000 to go toward outstanding meal balances for students. So really trying to work with our community and give them ways that they can give back very easily. RCPS Partner continues to be a great way for people to be engaged because it's, they can put their credit card down, it's very easy. And they can say, hey, I want to support this and, you know, and do it without much time or effort. And then ensuring all the schools have business partners represented on their school council. That's something that, you know, should be, every school should have a business partner, but we are now ensuring that every school has business partners represented on their school council. Increasing the parent voice. Our assistant superintendents have implemented a system to better track parent concerns. And then again, the communication survey that's going to go out for parents and guardians, allowing us to get that feedback from our parents and guardians. It's another way. Positive culture and climate. Enhancing various multi-tiered systems of support. You know, April Fallon lives in the world of MTSS and RTI, which RTI is Response to Intervention. It's not spelled out there, but we'll fix that so that anybody looking at this later will see RTI is Response to Intervention. So a lot of training happening prior to and at the beginning of the school year, redelivering training to school-level staff, quarterly meetings, and then all of the other things that April told us about, the early, providing early warning system trainings, the suicide awareness training for elementary, middle, and high school students, the social and emotional classroom guidance through Quaver and Naviance, and then created a list of resources available at each school that is going to be updated every semester. Moving on to providing safe and orderly procedural trainings throughout the year. This is ensuring safe and orderly school environments. And a lot has happened here, and their subsequent slides will also address this, but a lot of safety training for all of our school safety personnel, mindset training, traffic control, CPR, AED, golf cart safety, active shooter prevention, and workplace security, compliance modules, data security, safety plans communicated to students and staff, and they're providing that drill terminology communication to all parents and guardians. And then the county office safety procedures have been developed, and drill planning for this particular building is in progress. We, all the schools have drills, but now we're going to bring that to county office having drills as well. And we have had some in the past. Installing safety measures on all campuses. You hear about this a lot. I know Mr. Budenstich has updated us on everything from surveillance to lighting to our ID badge protocols. You know that we have had school safety personnel hired in our schools, that we have increased the SROs in all of our high schools, and that open gate systems, you know, have been brought into our secondary schools, we're expanding that. Radios, you can see, you know, everything that we have done with regard to safety. And I know Darren Green was here talking to you, Dr. Oates talks to you a lot about school safety. We have done a lot with regard to school safety in just a short amount of time. Create a framework to welcome all families and community members. And this is really where student registration has changed some of what they do to welcome and onboard families and acclimate them to Rockdale County Public Schools, changing their email welcoming and increasing the access to computers for families to register. Again, changing that language preference in Remind for our families that have different languages as their home language. And then the collaboration among technology and the registrars and other departments to create a more seamless process for our newcomers. And then looking at the webpage, making that a little more user-friendly, and then certainly the online application and trying to make revisions to that to also make that a little more user-friendly. Operational effectiveness and efficiency. Improving transportation services. We know that Mr. Budenstich has told us at the beginning of the school year, it was rough. And, you know, there were some things that in transportation, you know, we said, look, we've got to make an effort to improve our transportation services. And so we talked about Versatrans and the My Stop app being a little more convenient for parents. And then really tracking that on-time arrival and the last drop service, that's one, actually one of our measurable performance objectives, which I'll talk about at another strategic plan update, you know, on some of those measurables. And that's actually one of the measurables. And then making sure that, well, you know, we have ordered some new buses, and then 60% of our buses now have temperature control devices. And so, you know, that really helps in the hot weather here in Georgia, so. Ensuring students have equitable access to modern learning environments that meet the programmatic needs. So this one really was trying to address that it's nice to have, you know, new space, but if the space doesn't meet the programmatic needs, you're missing it, you're missing the point. It can look nice, but it has to meet the programmatic needs as well. So again, really trying to target that across the district and making sure that what, you know, one side of the district has, the other side of the district has. And so we're trying to make sure that we look at all aspects of that. And you can see, started looking at, from a facility standpoint, you know, the tracks and playgrounds and things that really all of the schools have. And lighting, whiteboards in classrooms, and parking lots. We've talked about, Mr. Ford has talked about the Epic System going in, and this is the Epic Center installed awning over the Alpha entrances. So again, making sure that, you know, what one building has, that another building has, and we're consistent across the district with our facilities. Improving the curb appeal, this is a really, an effort to make sure that, and we really have, our school facilities have a history of being great facilities. And this is just an effort to continue, because strategic planning is continuous improvement, right? So it's looking at what you have, and then how can you improve upon that? So improving the curb appeal of all schools. And improving the cleanliness and safety of facilities. One of the things that stuck out on here One of the things that stuck out on here for me was the restroom cleaning schedules are now posted in the employee completion sign off sheets. You know, you see that in restaurants a lot and so now we have that in our buildings as well. Providing a secure digital environment. I can tell you that our technology department has been doing a great job providing training, cyber and data security training to teachers and staff. I am scheduled, I think, the 31st to attend one myself. We've heard Mr. Ford talk a lot about the Epic Alert System that's in all schools, upgrading the Microsoft A5 licensing to the full security suite. He talked about that not too long ago. And then the infrastructure. We know that we have a lot of, we're a technology-rich district. We have a lot of technology, but it doesn't work if you don't have the infrastructure. So making sure, and I think this was something that's been completed, we have the Wi-Fi internet access at all schools external to the building. This was something that allows, you know, if you have to work in the parking lot or something like that, that you can do that. Hotspots continue to families that don't have internet and that is through the 10 Million Project and the Emergency Connection Fund. Continued the Microsoft licensing, licensing for Office 365 and Class Link. And then using the technology acquisition process for digital resources and hardware. Standardizing and modernizing the classroom technology equipment. And this kind of goes back to also addressing, you know, having technology is great, but when it's outdated, it's not so great. And you have to keep a schedule of refreshing the technology so that, you know, to ensure that our students have modern classroom technology equipment, not only classroom, but you'll see in here the refresh of the student and teacher laptops and our Parapros now having laptops, laptops to use as well. Promethean interactive panels, all of that, making sure that our technology is staying up to date, not just that we have it, but that we continue to improve it. So that is our update in a nutshell. And with that, I will close.
Sure.
Given the situation in Virginia with the six-year-old, are we considering any safer officers in elementary schools?
Mr. Budenstich or Dr. Oates, would you like to take that?
I'll address that. In fact, I, that incident in Newport News, Virginia really reinforced, I saw the father of the student who was down the hall from that incident talked about in his own sharing. He said, you know, some of the things that I wish maybe the school had considered was clear book bags was one thing he mentioned, which is something we've previously implemented. And, and also he mentioned some weapons detection systems, which he said, they don't have that school, but they, they just had a weapon, a metal detection in the media center, but not in the school. And of course, I already, on our return from the semester break, directed our safety department to go ahead and begin deploying another round of screening with open gate weapons detection system, beginning at our high schools, cycling through our middle and elementary schools. And they've completed the high schools actually already this week and, and uneventful, which is good. But, so what I would say is I will tell you that my goal and my desire is to ultimately have that, that type of personnel presence in our elementary schools. But I realize that when you're dealing with finite resources, you have to make some priorities in terms of where you do place those resources that you have. But let me be very clear and transparent. I would love for there to be an SRO in our elementary, you know, in each of our elementary schools. So it's going to be about where, what we need to do and it may, maybe it's not an SRO, but it's another, it's an adult who has the training, security training background to be able to be there. Because right now, what we know is we deploy our SRO that's in that cluster as needed. But I understand the comfort that would come from knowing that someone's there, but we'll have to make that commitment collectively as a governance team.
One other question. And I know you talked about live streaming and this has been mentioned several times, but is it a capability to what if people, if they're at home, if they want to make public comment, do we have that capability?
Interactive, not that I'm aware of. Interactive during this meeting, not, not that I'm.
Yeah. And when we, when we knew that we were going to go with live streaming so that our public can access it conveniently remotely and also go back, we had to make some decisions about the type of system we got and what would be the capability and capacity. And so I can certainly defer to technology, but it wasn't that, that there would be the ability to participate remotely. Right, right. That the one would have to, if they want, if you wanted to participate in public comment, you'd have to be present, but clearly you can see and, and engage.
Is there a way that we can possibly consider that or?
That's something that we would talk about at the executive cabinet level, pros and cons, certainly we can have that conversation for sure.
One more question, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Community survey. So when, when do you anticipate that survey going on? Cause you mentioned that it was going to be going on.
Yeah, next week I'm going to send it through Remind. Yeah, yeah. That way all of our rostered parents will get it through, you know, Reminds a text message. So they'll get it that way and then we'll put it on our website. But our goal is really to reach the parents with this. It's not a community survey. So our goal is to hand the parents the link to take this and that can be through Remind and, and email. Okay?
Just one last question. What Reggie, you talked about registration. I have a question, because I hear this throughout the committee, is that if I have one child over here and a child over here, do your registration process work to know that these are siblings? Because when you have two children in school and two children out of school and you have a hard time getting them in the system, I'm like, but say like the system should work to know these children belong to these parents.
And Cindy, Dr. Smith Dixon, I think has a microphone.
The students in the household, however, the process is as good as the input of the data. And so that's why it's very critical when you're submitting that information and we provided assistance to submit it in such a way. So if you've already been a parent in Rockdale, we always encourage those returning families to use the, the Infinite Campus Portal, Parent Portal, to actually initiate your enrollment because it helps to identify who you are and who's been attached to you. If the parent does not do that particular option, a part of the vetting process is the processors have strategies to try to figure out if others are attached to that family or should be attached to that family.
So are the parents educated on that process that that's what, that's the process they should take?
So we do the very best that we can to access our families and to share that information. We do have extra staff available, although we have limited in-person hours, we have been working kind of across the day based on the availability. And as families come in and ask those questions, we do provide that assistance. And we are working, as you heard Cindy express earlier, to refresh our webpage. Our goal is to make sure that the process is accessible to the average person, not necessarily the educator who may be completing that application process. So we recognize that there are challenges and opportunities that could be made clearer through that process.
Maybe add in a frequently asked question. That would be a part of, you know what I'm talking about, yeah. Frequently asked questions. If we have a child in the school system already, you know, do we have to go this way, that way, or the other, right?
Yeah, and yes, and I would like to say it's a little bit more complicated. So in a lot of instances, and you've heard me present on this, we have blended families. And so for example, we may have a blended family and I may be the guardian of all the kids in at home. My husband may be the guardian of one child in at home, but not necessarily all the other kids. And so another place that we've had to really help educate our families is just because he's my husband, doesn't mean that he's the natural guardian for those students. And so there are some very unique instances by which we have to help navigate some of those circumstances. And you may see, for example, the husband who's not the guardian listed as an emergency contact. So I wish the student registration process was a lot simpler. It isn't. It's very complicated because life and families and relationships are very complicated. But duly noted, we definitely will develop an FAQ to help that.
So I, I know that when we go to Infinite Campus each year to register, I did notice a question on there if, if we have a, if, if I have another child in the system. And so when I click on that, it asks me to put the child's name along with the school that the child attends. So now, you know, when John was in school, I could pull up his, his information, but I can also see that I have another child there and I can actually click on that child and see her information as well. And so I like that feature and, and I like that you have it and it's required because this year I didn't register and I kept getting these notices. And I was like, why do they keep, you know, I don't, I did that last year, you know? And it wouldn't let me and, and it sent me a notice, if you don't go in here and update, you won't be getting da, 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 da. So I said, oh my God, let me go on here. And I went in and did it. And of course, those same questions come out every single year and I was able to update, put, you know, put information in there. So I do know it's in the questions that they ask the parents, but the complicated situations, I don't know how that would work.
So I would like to share, just as recent as this week, the student registration team held a stakeholder group. And the non-negotiable was I want people to participate who aren't like us, who would be doing this and wouldn't necessarily have that context. And so they were very intentional about inviting internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders, as well as parents, to get that feedback. And so we are currently revising what would be our next 23, 24 student registration application. They actually sat in this exact same room, went through a mock process to get a feedback. And so I'm awaiting kind of the outcome of that feedback as far as what they were able to navigate, what their questions were, because the same questions that they had would be the questions of our families in the community. So great, great comment and feedback.
Yes, thank you. And you'll see that as artifacts and evidence in the next strategic plan update under parent voice.
Thank you.
I do have a question for Cindy. Cindy, you know, my concern is always on parent engagement. And so you mentioned school councils, right? Who is responsible for ensuring that school councils are up and running in each of our buildings?
So the assistant superintendents are the ones who would oversee our school buildings. They are the ones who I have contacted to ensure that we have business partners on those, right? And so, you know, as, as the feedback that I've gotten is that our school councils are up and running. So if I need to verify that more, it would be through the assistant superintendents.
Okay. And a second question was, I don't remember at what point you talked about a shared economic development employee. Who is that shared with? Who are we?
Yes, so we're talking about the Economic Development Liaison and it's a sharing between Rockdale County Public Schools and the CRESCE, the County of Rockdale Economic Development Council. And so that the, the sharing is in the compensation to that Economic Development Liaison.
Okay, so whose employees, ours or theirs, meaning?
We, we literally share the appointment. That employee has office space here upstairs, I believe it is. Phil, where's the office space that's upstairs? And they also have an office over at the, at the chamber, I guess it would be.
Yes.
Yeah. In fact, I was at the CRESCE board meeting this morning and Ms. Brasswell is there and is facilitating. Mr. Hannah was remote, was virtual for some specific reasons, but Ms. Brasswell was going over the budget and sharing projects that we're having because we're having some upcoming functions at RCA that are on the RCPS side of the coin that is about workforce readiness that she's facilitating and working with CRESCE.
And she's available for contact with, by the public, meaning all these, to be honest, all the folks that are asking us about economic development and all that, you would think that that is a person that we're appointing them, you know, these individuals to, that employee, because I didn't know we had, I'm sorry.
Well, she just started. She's, she's a fairly new employee.
To be honest, to say that I didn't know that we had someone. So now that I'm aware of the fact that they have someone and people approach me with certain questions, I can now state that we have an employee that is designated to answer those questions.
Yes.
So thank you for that. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Chair Vice, Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates, members of the board. I'll be going over the December financial report and I have one action item. Just a reminder that we are at the 50%, halfway through the fiscal year. So when you look at these numbers there through December, so halfway through the fiscal year, that's kind of fallen by. So here they are. The revenue for December, 62.4 million. The revenue year-to-date is 120.9 million, which is 66.8% of our budget. Last December, we see 54.7 million, which is 114.6 million year-to-date, which is 66.9% of our budget. 15.7 million expenses for December, 91.8 million year-to-date, which is 49.8% of our budget. Still barely under that 50, a little bit higher than the previous years you'll see, but still happy with where that is with the inflation and all the, everything going on. So last year, expenses were 14.4 million, 84.5 million year-to-date, which was 49.3% of our budget. Our outstanding commerces are $1,901,750. Our fund balance, let me go here first. Those are like out of order, but our assets, 74.3 million. Our liabilities, 6.7 million. Those are third-party payments. Our fund balance is 67 points, roughly 67.7 million. That, and then our fund balance, like I said, 67.7. Last year with 58.9. As I always tell you right now, this is the highest that fund balance is ever going to be. Most of our tax money's in, this number will start going down and it'll, as I compare the years, remember this year we have 3.5 million budgeted in fund balance reserves. So as I compare the years, as we go throughout the year, don't be surprised if this 23 number actually comes under that 22 number as we move on throughout the year. Probably won't happen until we get to the end of the year, but it will eventually come under that number. So just keep that in mind. All right, budget calendar. It's time to approve that budget calendar. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the FY '24 Budget Adoption Calendar as presented. The budget calendar provides the system and community with a budget timeline for critical budget processes and is needed to ensure we complete the budget process in a timely manner. As we have done in the past years, we use a budget committee that will be responsible for preparing the system budget. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Keith. Madam Chairwoman, I don't have any update remarks this evening.
Okay, thank you. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I would like to ask the board to please review the information for your references. Please review the December board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There is no old business, but there is new business.
Indeed, Madam Chairwoman. Item 10.1, I will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the proposed 2023 board meeting schedule as presented, which includes setting the 2024 annual meeting date for January the 11th, 2024. The rationale is in accordance with Board Policy BC, board meetings. The board shall hold a regular meeting during each calendar month. The dates and time shall be annually determined and published for two consecutive weeks and the official county organ following the setting of the dates. The attached schedule follows the Board of Education's protocol for holding a work session on the second Thursday of each month, followed by a regular session on the third Thursday of each month, except for May 2023 and June 2023 in the interest of transparency. In May, I asked the schedule, to the schedule the work session for May 4th and the regular session for May 11th due to a personal scheduling conflict on the third Thursday of May. My daughter will be graduating high school. And then in June 2023, board members will attend the Georgia School Boards Association 2023 Summer Conference and delegate assembly during the second week of June, which requires moving the work session to June 15th and the regular session to June 2022, 2023. Item 10.2, Board of Education Board Member Pledge of Ethics. In accordance with Board Policy BH, Board Code of Ethics, each board member is required to annually read Policies BH, Board Code of Ethics, and BHA, Board Member Conflict of Interest, and then execute the Attached Code of Ethics pledge as an expression of their personal desire to follow the guidelines as set out in these two policies and to operate in the most ethical and conscientious manner possible. in the most ethical and conscientious manner possible. The rationale is that in accordance with Board Policy BH, the signed pledges will become a part of the board's minutes for this meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the proposed 2023 Board Meeting Schedule as presented?
Don't move.
Second, Heather.
A motion to approve the 2023 Board Meeting Schedule as presented made by Barksdale and the second by Mrs. Duncan, Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? Any opposed? All in favor? The motion carries, seven to zero. Do I hear a motion to make the signed Board Member Pledge of Ethics a part of the board's minutes for this meeting?
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made by Barksdale and second by Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries, seven to zero. The cabinet has provided an overview of the action items for the board to vote on next week. Do I hear a motion for all of the action items to be placed on a consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I respectfully request that the item for Mr. Edwards Center Athletic Director Heritage High School be voted on separately.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so a motion has been considered to remove Edwards Center. All other action items will be under consent agenda at the regular session. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes, we're voting on the consent agenda. All in favor? Five, five and one, you're not voting for?
I was confused, what, take that, what did? We voted, then we went back and said?
The motion on the floor is the consent agenda minus what Wells removed.
But that's not what she said, she said consent agenda.
Okay.
Consent agenda for all remaining items.
Okay, so, okay, seven and O to vote, the motion carries. Okay, there is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. A motion to adjourn the meeting has been made by Heather Duncan and a second by Sandra Jackson Lett. The meeting is adjourned. All in favor?